Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Budget Committee meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency Monday, May 10, 2021, and note that all committee members are participating in this hearing via electronic communication. With that, could I have a roll call, please?
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't hear you, Sandy. Oh, you're muted now.
Are you on mute?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, it can.
Okay. Steve Clements.
Here.
Gary Leonard. Lillard, sorry, excuse me. Is he not with us?
He is.
Yes. John is excused. Dave, David Glave.
Here.
Nicole Howard. Is she with us?
If she's not, I will send her a text or Robert can.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Brad, if you can hear me, I can't hear anybody right now.
We can hear you, Mary. Can you hear us?
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Dustin Rock.
Here.
Greg Amor.
Here.
Matt Barber.
Here.
Edward, I believe, is excused. Scott McCollin.
Donald, here.
Ashley O'Toole.
Here.
Corinne Dudo.
It's Corinne, I'm here.
I'm sorry, Corinne. And I, Max, is excused.
All right, we're still waiting for Nicole to join us.
I'm here.
Okay, sorry, where are you? I don't see you in my list of people.
She's here, I see her.
Okay. Oh, there's, there's a lot of people here. Okay, got it. All right, with that, I'm going to ask if anyone needs to make a declaration of conflict of interest.
I have one.
All right.
This for the city or Urban Renewal?
This for the Urban Renewal District.
I do not have one for the Urban Renewal. I just have for the city. You want me to wait until we move to the city?
Yes, because we are, we are in the budget hearing for the Urban Renewal Agency, not the city. We'll, we'll transition after, after this budget is, is discussed. Anybody declaring a conflict of interest for the Urban Renewal District or Agency? Okay, I don't hear any, any declarations. The next phase of this meeting is for the committee to elect a chair, and I'll entertain nominations at this point.
I move that we name Matt Barber the Chair of the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, not advisory.
Second.
Yeah, you get what I meant.
Second.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Matt. Any other nominations? Okay, so as I'm reading my, my prompts here, since there are no other nominations, Matt Barber has been unanimously elected as, selected as Chair, and with that, I turn it over to Matt. And Matt, you've got it through item 12, and once we adjourn this meeting, I'll take over briefly. Brent, Brent asked that we give him a little bit of time to transition between Urban Renewal Agency and, and City Council. So, once you wrap things up, Matt, we'll, we'll have a bit of a pause and then, and then go into the next meeting. So, take it, Matt.
Okay, the, the public hearing on our proposed Urban Renewal District budget is now open. I would ask Robert to go ahead and give us his message and, and review, and is, get us started. Okay, let me do a quick screen share. Okay, you should see Urban Renewal Agency budget hearing on your screen. And just to let you know that we did not receive any, excuse me, public testimony in advance for the Urban Renewal Agency budget hearing. We included in our public notices different methods by which people could provide input, and none was received for the Urban Renewal Agency. Our agenda for this evening is first, we will do the Urban Renewal District budget, and following the Urban Renewal budget, we will move into the city's, City of La Grande budgets, it'll be the General Fund, and the Enterprise and Other Funds. And just as a reminder, for the city's budgets, we will not have any public testimony on those until Tuesday night, and we do have some written testimony that was provided. And then, just kind of tentatively for tomorrow night, we'll give a recap of tonight, but then we'll be on the city's budgets. There will be public comments that have been received for the General Fund, then we'll have the General Fund budget approved, and then we'll move into the Enterprise and Other Funds. And hopefully, we'll be able to get this done in two nights, if not, then we can continue the city's budgets to Wednesday night. So we are here to discuss the proposed budget for the Urban Renewal Agency. Pardon me, I'm getting over a cold that I had about a week ago. So, the budget message that you see on the screen was provided as part of the budget packet to the Budget Committee, and essentially, what it reflects is that each year, the Urban Renewal Agency meets in a retreat, and they provide an affirmation of our economic development efforts, and discuss the intent or not to under levy surplus property taxes. Based on the guidance that we received from the agency, we did, in fact, include in the proposed budget an under levy that allows us to continue to fund our core economic development efforts and capital projects, and then maintain about a $250,000 unappropriated any fund cash balance that gets us through until we get our property tax revenues, and then to under levy the rest of the increased incremental value for the district, so those property tax revenues will go to the other taxing jurisdictions, including the city's general fund. The proposed budget includes the continuation of our facade program, but we are asking to increase that from $50,000 up to $75,000, increasing the non-business park call for projects from $250,000 to $350,000, and then $100,000 would be added to the existing $200,000 being carried forward for our agency identified targeted improvement inside the central business zone. The $200,000 that we're carrying forward is currently earmarked to be used as match for an EDA grant that we're applying for, if we're successful. If we don't receive that grant and don't need to use that match, then we would have $300,000 available for an Urban Renewal Agency targeted project within the central business zone. It also includes carrying forward the unused $200,000 for the traded sector incentive for new traded sector business relocating into the Grand Business and Technology Park. And then we have $125,000 of unused call for projects money for projects located at the Business Park as well. And then the $100,000 that normally would have gone to Business Park, that's what we're using to plus up the central business zone call for projects from 250 to 350. And there are other carried forward funds for existing grants that have not been, where the projects have not been completed. One of the other things, just to, to note, because of the constraints surrounding how Urban Renewal has to operate, there's an agreement between the City of La Grande and the Urban Renewal Agency for the transfer of funds to do our economic development activities in the Economic Development Department. And when we look at the transfer to the General Fund for personnel and, and projects, that pretty much mirrors the economic development budget in the city's general fund, just for your information. And then, everybody's aware that as we're putting this together, we're, we're still not at the end of the pandemic, so there may be things that could impact what we're doing. So just need to make that little notation. When your packet, you have more detail than the slides that I'm going to run through, but the Urban Renewal Agency is comprised of two separate funds. One is the Urban Renewal Agency's General Fund, and this is where we identify the various projects that we're doing, the transfer to the city's general fund to actually execute those projects. And I talked about the carry forward dollars. We are looking at, in this proposed budget, 200, I'm sorry, $525,000 of new funding for capital projects for the coming fiscal year. And then, we're carrying over a little over 500, almost $530,000 of either funds for programs that have not had any takers, such as the traded sector, and those unfinished projects. And then there is the Urban Renewal Debt Fund, where we make the payments on the debts, and this is also where the property taxes come into, that are then transferred to the Urban Renewal General Fund, whether either expended or transferred. And the under levy that we talked about will be levying based on a $62 million figure, it's a little bit higher than that, you can see the number on your slide. And based on that assessed value, we'll bring in $1,125,000 to the Urban Renewal District. And on this slide, if you look to the left, you can see for each taxing jurisdiction, the dollars that we would anticipate that they would receive. We did provide the required notice of our intent to under levy. None of the taxing jurisdictions reached out and raised any objections or comments regarding the intent to under levy. So, with that, we did not receive any public comments, and so, we're at the point now for questions from the Budget Committee and Budget Committee member discussions, and I'll go ahead and end my screen show at this time unless anybody wants to see any of those slides back again. Okay. Hey, we got, anybody that has, has questions or, or concerns, or something they'd like to have Robert explain a little more?
Matt, just, just for, as an FYI for you, at the bottom of the screen, there's a participant icon that says, if you open that up, you might, sometimes people raise their hands in, in that list. I often miss that in council meetings, but you might want to open that up and, and see how participants, how participants raise their hands if they have questions. I, I just have a couple of, of questions for Robert on the budget. Under Urban Renewal General Fund Resources, principal payments and interest payments, they're estimated at $3,317,000 respectfully, but you budget quite a bit more, it seems, for both of those. And what's, what's the rationale behind that?
So, those are for the loan program that we have, and during the pandemic, we offered a period of forbearance on the principles, principal and interest payments. And so that was not taken advantage by all of them, but at least one, I think, or perhaps two, had taken advantage of the forbearance. So that's why what we're estimating to be the actual dollars received is less than what we had budgeted, and then we've restored the full budgeted amount for principal and interest for the proposed budget.
Okay. And then my, my last question is down under requirements. You have the first line item, which is the Urban Renewal Plan Projects, has $952,550, and then below that, you have call for projects, current year, prior years, Business and Tech Park, et cetera. There are no account, accounting numbers associated with those. Is, is, what, what's the rationale behind that? I mean, is that just a way to break it out and tell us where that $952,000 is going?
Exactly that. We decided we did not want to do is for essentially every single project to create a new account number, because then for each of those, we would be maintaining that line essentially for five or six years of history on this document, regoing back, one going forward. So, that $952,000 was the total budget amount for all of those down to the traded sector.
All right. Good. Thank you.
I did want to also comment on one additional thing. It's, it's nothing that the Budget Committee has to take any action on, but just so that you're aware, we have received an offer to purchase a parcel that is owned by us adjacent to the La Grande Business and Technology Park. It's actually on the corner of Gekler, Gekler's side of the dental lab, and it's a full price offer, and so we'll be moving forward with, with that sale. So what we will end up seeing next year, under the property sales line, will be the proceeds from that sale. And the full price offer for that parcel is $75,000. And since the agency has already identified that as the, the purchase price, oh, I will go ahead and move forward with that transaction. And just wanted to make the Budget Committee aware that that's going on. So I'll be accepting that offer later on this week, and we'll be moving forward for that transaction. And is there, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, cool. I do see Corinne's hand is up, Matt.
I just had a quick question on the requirements. The administrative fees general fund has gone up quite a bit since 2019, about $40,000.
Yeah, did you receive the list of questions and answers that we provided to you separately?
Yeah, some of them. I just wanted an explanation on air.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. So on the screen, are you still seeing the, you see a Word document now?
No.
Okay, cool. I'm, I'm pulling up the document that, that talks about that. So for the Urban Renewal admin fees, that's the overhead cost associated with providing services to Urban Renewal, and we have a formula that we use that applies to all of the Enterprise Funds. We actually figured out an amount for the General Fund departments as well, but we don't transfer that. And one of the, I think, the biggest reasons that you see that increase is the addition, a couple years ago, when we add the full-time HR position to the city's staff, which impacts the admin fee amount.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got any more questions or discussion?
Greg has his hand up.
Yeah, just to comment on that, so $60,000 is being charged to Urban Renewal, but the cost of that human resources is, what, $100,000?
That is, well, that als, that also includes the Finance Department, it includes a portion of my salary. There are several factors that go into that. So, a big chunk of that is out of the Personnel and Finance, a chunk of that is, I believe, for the software, again, my staff time is all a component of that admin fee. is all a component of that admin fee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I just got a general comment. Urban Renewal spent a lot of money. Like we're up to $12 million. And I look at the downtown, we still got some vacant buildings. I think I commented last year about the, where the Big H is at. We spent, I think, $2.5 million on Big H. I can't remember the exact numbers. But we've got the Bonin Camp property down there. A third of that's never been rented out. We've got the Pennies Building, which is adjacent. And it's been vacant for three years. And so as a citizen, I'm looking at what kind of return on, on a reinvestment we're getting for the money that we're spending. And then I guess the second point I would like to make is we got Safeway down there that I think I added up the Cessers values for their building and their land. And it came up to like $7 million that they've invested or got a value down there now. And with Urban Renewal, you took and you gave somebody half a million dollars to start another grocery store to compete against them. And one of the things I've heard from some of the downtown businesses is they work hard to develop their business. And then somebody new wants to start another business. And the city gives them money to compete against them. And I guess I should go back to my comment on Safeway. They're the largest property taxpayer in the Urban Renewal District. You collect $100,000 in property taxes from them a year. Turn it around, use that part of that same $100,000 to compete against them. And as a business looking to come to LeGrand, would I want to spend a bunch of money? And develop my business and then somebody goes to Urban Renewal and you give them half a million dollars to compete against me? And then you do that anytime. You can look at the restaurant business. There's only so much business out there. And every time you create another participant, you just cut up the pie. You don't, most of the time, you don't increase the business. That's my comment.
Corinne, I see a, a hand in front of your picture. Does that mean you want to say?
So yeah, if I could just comment, and Greg, I appreciate, I appreciate the remarks and one of the, one of the realities with Urban Renewal is when you're invest, investing in those projects and properties, you are potentially providing a benefit to a competing business. And I think the grocery store is a, a one-off, very unique circumstance that the agency took, undertook. I think when you look at a lot of the other projects that the agency has done, they are for existing property owners in LeGrand who want to improve their business. In some cases, as part of an acquisition. I think that probably the single best illustration of a good investment by the agency is the IOF Building, which has tapped that in the bottom now and has housing on the upper floors. I think we have a little over $100,000 into that particular project. And then there's an additional amount of money from a Main Street grant that we were able to access because we have a performing Main Street program. And you mentioned specifically the Bonin Camp Building. And one of the things that we've engaged the current owners of that property with is the thought of using the agency initiated dollars to leverage that Main Street grant to potentially bring collectively $200,000 to $300,000 to doing a project there that would entail adding an elevator and being able to provide access to the upper floors of that. So I think there, there are still a lot of good opportunities to do some great things. And when we look at the overall return on investment for the district since its inception, I think we're still somewhere around that 10 to 1 private dollars to public dollars for the amount of money that we put into projects. And I see Mr. Lillard has his hand raised. Matt?
Well, I think you just answered the question or comment I was going to make in terms of the investment ratio, you know, in terms of private dollars that have been leveraged by the public dollars as well as property tax income revenue. It has shown itself to be pretty valuable, in my opinion.
So you're, I got a question. So you're saying the $12 million that we've spent, we've got $120 million back in value?
No, for the, for the call for projects and facade investment portion.
Okay. See, and the question about that is too, if they hadn't got the money, would they still gone through with the project?
And, and that's a really great question, Greg. And you know, we had a group that called the Urban Renewal Review Committee, I believe, that took a look at from the inception of when the district was formed until I think about three years ago, three, four years ago, whether or not the district had been making a difference. And I think the thing that's most telling is if you track the assessed value in the city of LeGrand for decades, even pre-99, when the district was first formed, the slope of the line of increase in property assessments inside the district and outside the district were essentially parallel. In, I believe, 2011, which would have been the first assessment year after we started the call for projects, you can see a very marked departure in those slopes where the district was seeing a much higher rate of increase in value that coincides with us putting together those public-private partnerships. So while it's possible that some of those projects may have occurred, whether we had participated or not, I think when you take in total what we're, what we've seen happen, it all kind of coincides with when we did the Big H project, when we started the call for projects, we were seeing increased activity in the district that directly correlates back to the timing of those. And if you recall, you know, 2010, 2011, we were in the middle of a recession. So to see that increase in value at that same time, I think really speaks to that. And that was the conclusion that that Citizen Review Committee came to. And I see that Nicole Howard has her hand up.
Yeah, I just strangely happened to be reading that report, Robert, this morning. Don't ask why. And the increased value within the district, it increased it a little over 2% over the rest of the assessed value in LeGrand. So within the district, property values went up at a higher rate. And the other number that really stands out to me, just Greg, for your point, is that the public investment as of 2018 was about 2.7 million and the private investment 17 and a half million. So would they be investing more than 17 million on their own? I think, you know, you need a magic eight ball to figure that out, but one assumes that given the fact that that investment, both from the city's part and the private part, has led to an uptick in increased in assessed value. It's, it's working on some level. And to your other point that, you know, I'm, one business is being taxed to subsidize its competition. I would simply say that, you know, straight up capitalism says competition is good. Competition makes things better ultimately. You have to up your game and it keeps you honest and it does lots of ancillary good things. So I just wanted to throw that context out there.
Gary, did you have something else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Somebody care to make a?
Actually, Matt, before that, you would close the public hearing and then entertain the motion.
So I, I will at this time, close the public hearing on the proposed Urban Renewal District budget and entertain a mo-
Move that the Urban Renewal District certified to the county a request that 62,000, 60, in increment value be used for the purpose of dividing taxes and that the Urban Renewal District budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 be approved as presented. And further, that it be forwarded to the Urban Renewal Agency for consideration and adoption during its regular session on June 2nd, 2021.
A second.
Have we got any more discussion?
And just for Sandra's benefit, that was Ashley O'Toole with the motion and Corinne with the second. Okay, Sandra, would you call a roll?
Steve?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Ashley? Corinne?
Yes.
That's it.
Well, I showed that as having passed you now. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, at this time, I will adjourn the Budget Committee to consider approval of Budget Committee minutes during the agency's regular session on June 2nd, 2021. And I think Brett needed a little bit of time after we're done here to set up for the next.
Thank you. So we'll wait for Brett's queue and
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, we're good.
Ready to go, Brett?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'll call to order the Budget Committee meeting for the city of LeGrand to include the general enterprise and other funds Monday, May 10th, 2021. Note that all committee members are participating via electronic communication. And with that introduction, could I have a roll call, please? Can't hear you.
Sorry, I apologize. Steve Fleming?
Yes.
Gary Leonard?
Yes.
John, John is accused. David Blake?
Here.
Nicole Howard?
Yeah.
Mary Ann Muesner?
Here.
Dustin Rock?
Here.
Brad Amor?
Here.
Matt Barber? Edward is accused. Scott McConnell?
Here.
Ashley O'Toole?
Here.
Corinne Dudo?
Here.
Am I saying that correct, Corinne?
Is that it?
And Matt is accused. Yeah.
As with the last meeting, I would, I'm going to ask if there are any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Yes, I would like to. I am declaring a potential conflict of interest because of the city of LeGrand has a competitive award contracts for towing services which may include a business in which I have interest that could receive payments from the city of LeGrand's general fund budget and other city budgets. I do not believe this is a, a potential conflict of interest while influencing my decision regarding the city's budgets and that I can remain impartial and therefore I will be participating in the decision and voting of the budgets.
Yay!
I have one. I'm declaring an actual conflict of interest. I have an actual conflict of interest for the city's general fund budget. I have a relative who is an employee of the city and receives salaries and benefits from the Parks and Recreation Department of the general fund. Based on this actual conflict, I am not going to participate in the discussion or vote in any elements of the city's general fund budget.
Okay, any other dish, any other declarations? The only comment to add to that is after many years, it's nice to see Justin be able to step in and participate. Not, not, we, we, we're losing Kayla, but we're gaining Justin. So I, you know, maybe it's a wash here, so.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. We've had our declarations. We need now to elect a chair. Do I have any nominations for Chair of the City of LeGrand Budget Committee?
I move we appoint Ashley O'Toole as Chair of the Budget Committee, of the city's Budget Committee.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, so hearing no other nominations, Ashley has been unanimously selected as the chair. And I turn it over to him to conduct the remaining of the remainder of the budget hearing. Not least of which is to get a, a second or a vice, what do you call this? A vice chair? Yeah.
A vice chair, yeah. I accept that position. Thank you for the nominations. Do we have a nomination for a vice chair, please?
I'll nominate Matt.
All righty.
Second.
You second? Okay, Justin seconds. All right, Matt Barber's our vice chair. So at this point, we'll conduct committee discussion of meetings parameters, I believe. Robert, is that something you'll take away for us?
I can. Thank you. So typically, the Budget Committee at this juncture will talk about, is there a ceiling in terms of timeframe that you want to go this evening? My suggestion would be somewhere in the 8:30 to 9 o'clock, depending upon where we are. I think we should be able to get through, well, certainly be able to get through the entire presentation of the budgets and then get quite a few of the department questions and answers done. My suggestion would be at about the 8:30 point, kind of see where we are and then make a decision as to whether or not we want to push on a little bit or if you had a good logical breaking point. So that's, that's really the parameters of the meeting benefit.
Right. That sounds good. That sounds about like every other year. So we'll do that. We'll just kind of run through these, check in at 8:30, see where we're at if we got time for one or two more and just try not to make it past nine, I suppose. Thank you, Robert. Yeah. And if that's it, we'll move on and announce that the public hearings of the proposed budgets and state revenue sharing are now open. And as Robert and others have said earlier, there are public testimonies that were accepted and they will be read aloud tomorrow, Tuesday, May 11th. So with that, we'll move on to item six of the agenda, which is requesting the budget message. And that again is you, Robert. Thank you.
It's probably a good idea to not mute myself as I'm sharing my screen. Okay, I apologize for that. So first and foremost, I think it's important to point So first and foremost, I think it's important to point out that despite the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, I think our team did an exceptional job of providing services in La Grande, even with facilities closed to the public and the strict safety precautions that we had in place. I think we've actually identified some enhancements in customer service that came out of that situation, perhaps most notable, the way that we accept payments at the finance department. We have done, you know, bill pay and online paying for a while, but the ability to just pick up the phone and call to, to pay for something is something that, that we did out of necessity, that we're continuing even though the doors are open again. And really just pleased that we're, you know, on a good, good path towards getting back to a little bit more of a sense of normalcy. From a budgetary standpoint, there have been some notable impacts to our budget. One of those being the significant reduction in transient room tax dollars, our parks and recreation and aquatics program fees, and then also the, the street and roads with essentially the state and much of the country shut down a lot less tax dollars to go into our streets and road budget that come from the state. So those are three areas that, that we did see an adverse impact on the revenue side. And we continue to be vigilant about how we're spending our money and keeping track of what we're seeing with the revenues sources, so that if there are any impacts, so we can adjust. And when, when you look at the budget, or if you, since you've already looked at the budget, you've noticed that there are reduced projections for transient room tax and for program revenues in aquatics and rec programs. That said, we are budgeting for being fully open and having all of those programs in place because if we don't assume the greatest amount of revenue, or greatest amount of expenditures, and suddenly it turns out that we are able to, you know, go back to complete full participation in our aquatics program, and our revenues come back, which means that we have the greater numbers of staff, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we haven't appropriately budgeted. We are also in the budget identifying a $2 million budget line in anticipation of receiving ARP funds from the federal government. I don't think that the Department of Treasury has yet identified the specific rules and requirements for the uses, but we are budgeting those as a $2 million revenue line and a $2 million expenditure line. And once those rules are set, the council will then be asked for some decisions on how we want to proceed with that, but we have included that in the proposed budget of the council managers line. Excuse me. And from a staffing perspective, we are looking at essentially the same staffing level with a couple of exceptions. One of those being the addition of one FTE in the police department and two part-time positions in the library. At the budget committee, it's your responsibility to review the budget, hear from the citizens, ask questions so that you can make an informed decision. Your role will be to approve the budget. Uh, this includes the city's general fund budget as well as the enterprise and other funds. And then the city council can make changes to those, but there are some limitations in, in how much they can change it without having to come back and do additional steps before it would be ultimately adopted. And again, it was developed using the priorities that the council set out at their retreat, and what you'll see as we go through is there's really not a lot of change from the prior year. Our general fund, we're looking at revenues in the, just under, just over $12 million as compared to almost $14 million of expenditures. And again, that does include that $2 million, both on the revenue and expenditure side for the federal funding. And this does mean that we are budgeting for a deficit of $1.4 million. But part of the decision of the, the council has been to continue to operate and expend funds and do capital projects and improvements, and rely on our cash on hand to cover that, recognizing that we need to maintain, I guess, 1.7-ish million dollars in cash to carry us through to November in the city's general fund. So it is a deliberate decision by the city council to budget at a potential deficit. Reality is, we're, we're very good in our revenue projections over the years, where we, we're generally going to get within a couple percent of what we forecast for that. And then in terms of our expenditures, again, we're typically in the 90% of expenditure in the general fund. But when you're talking, you know, $10 million budget, and you have, like, you know, kind of kid the, the police chief, that they seem to always be down to, they are always down a, a police officer or a dispatcher, or two of each, which creates a hiring lag which results in funds that are not expended, that were budgeted to be expended for those staffing. And so that's part of the reason why we don't expend all of the, 100% of the budget. So while we're forecasting a deficit, that assumes that we spend everything that we budgeted, which we typically don't do. We also have increased our contingency and our reserve for future expenditures. Contingency specifically at $750,000, so we raised it to that last year, and then I think we moved 250,000 of that into COVID relief. Uh, so we still had a $500,000 contingency. We want to maintain a large contingency in the general fund, even with those federal funds coming in. So in terms of just kind of the 10,000-foot view, identified the changes in staffing, but beyond those, that one full-time position and two part-time, we're not looking at any increased staff. Uh, we're seeing a 5.28% increase overall in labor costs across all funds, and our materials and services is showing an increase of about 17% across all funds. And capital outlay is an increase of about 8%. And in our city's general fund, the total capital outlay that we're looking at there is 404,000, but that does include a new ambulance. And that's actually a little bit less than we spent in our current year. And just as a reminder that the debt fund, you'll still see that, but the, that sewer loan was paid on full in July 2019. These charts are in your packets, and they just kind of lay out for you, first, the budget of resources, current budget comparison, and you can see that they're actually pretty similar. If you look at the, the net change of, you know, almost 4 million, half of that is that $2 million that we're plugging in for federal dollars. And then here's the requirements across all funds. Then here's the, the general fund dollars. This is the resource piece. And then the general fund requirements. And this next slide shows the revenue pieces. Uh, one thing I will point out is, so the, the department requested column is what was submitted by the departments. And then after sitting down, kind of department by department, we identified the manager proposed budget. So the far right column is what I am presenting to the city council and the budget committee for approval and ultimate adoption. And you'll notice that the requested was, was a total of $15 million of revenue, revenue, but that got bumped up to 17. That reflects that $2 million change to add in the, that federal ARP funding amount. We did notice a minor error this morning in the narrative for the general fund contingency. Uh, we had updated the unappropriated ending fund balance in the proposed after we had those meeting with the department directors. But we missed changing that number in the narrative under the explanation. All the numbers in the budget that were presented to you were correct and accurate of what, what the proposed budget is. We just made that one minor mistake in the narrative, and I just wanted to point that out to you. I will probably owe donuts for that, the treat officer. So now I'll walk kind of quickly through the departments and, and hit on the highlights in the council, manager, and personnel. Again, here the big item that we have is that increasing materials and services to reflect the $2 million line to give us the ability to expend funds that we receive from the feds. Exactly what that use will be will ultimately rest with the city council, and we have not had those discussions yet because we don't know what the rules are yet. We are looking at increasing the amount of support time that we get for our IT tech support. I'll tell you that we had quite a bit of discussion internally with the department directors about, do we look at hiring someone internal full-time, what makes the most sense? And at this juncture, where we landed was to add an additional day from ESD, and so that's a $30,000 increase proposed in the budget. And we've also done some things internally to help try to make sure that we're being efficient in how their work is prioritized. The other thing that you'll see here is in the professional services, we've got the, the website costs. Some of those are going to be paid out of this year's budget and have been, but I've kept the council apprised of the fact that we are in fact updating the city's website. That work is underway now. And we do want to move forward to do that compensation study for the non-represented, and then the $5,000 for codification, codification. Uh, that's, I think, something that will really be a benefit particularly to our citizens because currently we have literally dozens of city ordinances that make up our laws. And so you, you have to go to this ordinance on, you know, said, you know, nuisances or whatever. This process will take all of the city's ordinances that are essentially the, the law portions, put them into a single document, and we will then be able to host that on the city's website to make it really easy for someone to go in, and if they want to know, you know, when are quiet hours? What's the nuisance ordinance? What's the noise ordinance? Uh, they'll be able just to search that on our website and easily go to a document. And then as we update those ordinances, we'll do it in a slightly different fashion, but we think that'll be much more user-friendly and will really pay dividends for us. Our transient room tax allocations, uh, these are a little bit lower than the current year to reflect that reduced amount of revenues that we're expecting on pro-rata. And the one significant change here is taking the TRT funds that historically had been allocated on a pro-rata basis to the Blue Mountain Conference Center, moving those over to the Chamber for Tourism Promotion since Oregon Military Department has taken over the Conference Center function. And then the reference to the $2 million in ARP funds. And then this itemizes at the bottom, the $113,000 of transfer to the General Reserve Fund for future expenditures. We're also, and I can't remember if it's in this budget or a different one, but just to mention it now, we do want to upgrade the HVAC system in City Hall. Uh, we actually think that's going to really make a huge difference in terms of energy costs. Finance Municipal Court, pretty much a status quo budget, not really much of a change here. Uh, the police department. We do, did see that computer system maintenance agreements went down because of the new dispatch software that we have. And we do, are seeing an increase in small tools for the portable radio replacements, those are 10 years old, and as part of their fleet transition, $50,000 for one new patrol vehicle for this year. And highlights for fire, uh, some, some decrease in the training in terms of the number of student residents that we thought we might have. Medical supplies, the big bump there is the five new IV pumps and the three scoop stretchers. And then, uh, on the capital side, we are budgeting to purchase a new ambulance, and that'll keep us in line with kind of our rotation cycle. We've identified here the age of the fleet for your use. So that's that 190, bulk of that $195,000 purchase. Parks Department, we are doing a bit of a restructuring in parks with the upcoming retirement of one of our more, of our more senior members out there. Uh, Stu took a look at exactly the configuration and is kind of restructuring thing, I think in a, you know, real positive fashion. And so some dollars are being moved around. We're carrying forward funding that if we don't install it this year, we will next year for the Optimus Field Infield turf. And then also the purchase of a three-quarter ton pickup. Aquatics, yeah, I mentioned that our codics superintendent is planning on retiring, and so we're adjusting how we're, we're staffed and how we're functioning out there. And again, continuing to put money away for boiler replacements in the future. Recreation, you know, again, not a lot of changes, just kind of the staffing restructuring. And really no significant changes in urban forestry. Library, the significant change there is the addition of the two part-time library clerks.
Robert, real quick, did you skip urban forestry?
No, I didn't. I just said that there weren't very many changes.
Okay, got it.
Again, the, the addition of two part-time library clerks to give them more flexibility in staffing. And you'll hear, if you haven't read the letters that came in, there's a lot of letters of support for making that change. Uh, planning department. Uh, one of the things that we're seeing here is just simply the change to reflect that certified local government grant. Uh, but other than that, it's pretty much a status quo budget. Economic development, again, not a great deal of, of change here. Uh, some of the highlights is, uh, we are going to be updating the website. The cost of that has changed slightly, and then we're also looking at funding a rare participant. This is a great program for essentially a total of $25,000. We get about nine months of a recent college graduate to do activities for us. You'll, the council will recall Lori, who did a couple of presentations to you about her efforts. She's a rare participant. And we use rare participants for several years to staff the Grand Main Street Downtown Program. Building maintenance, here's where we talk about the funding to upgrade the HVAC system in City Hall. We're going to take a big chunk of that out of the general reserves. Also, the council a few years ago passed a resolution that talked about what we do with unanticipated increases in cash and 50% of those need to go into capital projects. So this is where we're putting some of those dollars. And we're looking, I think, about a 10-year payback in terms of energy savings. But it's going to be a pretty significant project that I, it's my understanding that the HVAC system that was installed is not commercial. It's essentially a residential system that they put on the building. So this will be a much better situation for us. So that is the end of the general fund. And at the glance at my agenda. And I think I am going to just continue through with the rest of these. And then that way we've kind of covered them all and then we'll backtrack. So building inspections. Not a significant amount of change. This is on includes, because it acts as an enterprise fund, you'll see an unappropriated ending fund balance and a reserve for future expenditure amount here. So really not a great deal of change there. And then it has its own reserve fund. You know, we're not anticipating doing anything there other than just, we're not adding any additional deposits to it. 911 Emergency Fund, not a significant difference here either. Public Works Services, this is the fund that essentially paid, where all of the labor is paid out of for Public Works. And it's charged out to each division in Public Works. And we do maintain that $180,000 contingency in case we have additional things. We are seeing in this fund a little bit of an increase in COBRA because of some retirements. And for those that are not familiar, we have a provision where if employees were hired prior to a certain date and worked a certain number of years, the city covers health insurance until they were up to three to five years, depending upon that configuration, to carry them through to Medicare. Water Fund. Again, not a, not a huge change here. As you can see, it's one of our more expensive undertakings, but not a lot of difference from the current year. And we continue to put money away in the reserve for future improvements. Motor Pool, all of the equipment that is in Public Works is essentially rented out of the motor pool. And we have two mechanics that work full-time employees that work out of this department. And they're looking at replacing one vehicle. And also, we'd intended to purchase a street sweeper this fiscal year. We budgeted for it. It's looking like it will not be received before the end of the fiscal year. So we're actually carrying those dollars into next year, into this proposed budget, spend it so that we don't have an issue of timing of that expenditure. If for some reason it shows up before the end of this fiscal year and we complete that transaction, then we just won't spend the money twice. Street and Road Fund, and this is the one that is paid for with gas taxes. And one of the things that you will see here is we are increasing contribution into street maintenance from water and sewer to more accurately reflect the cost of doing the rehab to the street that is associated with repair work and improvements. So that pluses up the revenue line a little bit. And then it also has its own reserve fund. And we do have three existing projects that are funded. The ADA Accessibility Grant, the Safe Routes to Schools, which is actually a staff position. And then STIP. And then we have included in potential grant for ADA accessibility and also for local improvement districts. And again, the new projects don't happen unless we actually get the funding that's tied to them. The Street Maintenance Budget, this is the one that is funded with the user fee that's attached to the water bills. And we're looking at our significant project. If you've been driving around over by second, you can kind of see that that's in progress and underway. So that's going to be a little bit of a construction challenge for folks for a bit. Storm Utility. This is, this includes our snowplow budget. This includes if we have flooding, those events. And again, not a lot of change in this one from year to year. And this is also a special utility fee that's assigned that funds this operation. And it has its own reserve. Wastewater Treatment or Sewer Treatment. Not a significant difference. We do still have an increase in consultants because we're hopeful that we will in fact get a new permit from BEQ soon. And that we know that that is going to come with some additional requirements. And when we get that permit, we will have the budget in there to figure out what we need to do to respond to whatever changes they're imposing on us. Sewer Collection. And this is where we do that port-in-place liner for this sewer system that reduces our inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. And you also can see that increase in funding to the Street and Road Fund. And we're also looking at a new rehab project and a new sewerless station. So those dollars are getting transferred to the Sewer Reserve for those purposes. And here is that Sewer Reserve Fund. And the rehab is the U Avenue List Station. Grants and donations, this is where we have identified that $150,000 potential for that EDA grant. So if we do receive that, it'll come into and be expended out of the grants and donation fund. And this thing fluct, this, this is the fund that fluctuates quite a bit. We'll put dollars in in anticipation of getting grants. And if we get them, then we have the budget to expend them. If we don't get them, then we can't spend the money. And just while I'm on this topic, the council is aware that we've added to the monthly report that separate section on grants, just to give you a little bit more visibility of what's going on with grants that we have that are in excess of $3,000. General Reserve Fund. You can see that $60,000 expenditure for the HVAC system. We're also budgeting $300,000 in the capital outlay for general capital projects. We don't have anything specific there, but if something should come up, we would do it. Current year, that's the line where we spent the dollars to reroute the library. And we typically put $200,000 or $300,000 in this line so that we have the flexibility if we needed to do something. And we do, as you can see, keep track of those transfers that come into this department that all come from the council manager budget. We do identify how much money those departments have expended. And Heather maintains a separate spreadsheet that shows who's, who has what balance in those. And as discussed earlier, the debt fund has been paid off. And so you'll see this for one more year before it actually disappears and we don't have to continue to report on it. And so that is the end of that kind of overview that hit the highlights. And now we go back into the questions, kind of department by department. And that's tomorrow night, so I'm going to go ahead and stop the screen share. And I'm going to flip my budget book back to the city's general fund and ask if you have any questions about any of the departments. And so first one up is the general fund kind of revenue piece. Any questions on any of those revenue projections? I see Greg's hand is up.
Yeah, on the 2020 actual for the right-of-way license fees.
Yeah.
You got 299, 592.
Uh huh.
So I tried to do the math on that. And the electric and gas debt increased 40%. So that would be 259,000. And then part of that right-of-way license agreement with garbage too.
Right.
So if you look up there on garbage, it went from 69 to 143. There's another 70,000. So 70,259 is not 299, 992.
So the right-of-way license fee of 299 is in addition to those franchise fees.
Right. If you take, if you take the 5% collected from electric at 439, 532 and add it to the gas at 5% at 208, 158. And multiply that, because it increased from 5% to 7%, that would be 40%. 40% of that comes out to 259. But then you also have to add in the city garbage, right? Because that was part of the rice and wage license agreement increase.
Yes, but that increase took place mid-year.
I talked to Ron Larvik when this was going on. And from what I remember, it was because you created that right-of-way license agreement and they were all together at the same time. That was implemented a month or two before the start of the fiscal year, that next fiscal year.
Yeah, Greg, but, and I can't remember the exact timing, but we renewed the franchise agreement with the Larviks to move those right-of-way license numbers out. And they're now all in the franchise fee. If you're looking at projections.
Well, I'm looking at actual under 2020. And then you know, you got budgeted for 2021. You budgeted 100% of the franchise fee, the 5%. And then I guess another thing's confusing too. Previous franchise fees, the percentage always showed beside it. And now those franchise, that percentages aren't there anymore.
Oh, we can put those back.
Okay, because that, because that sort of
Yeah.
This, because you don't know whether that garbage is at the old fee of 3% or is that the new one of 7%?
Right, that's a good point.
Anyway, I can't get those numbers to add up. And then when you project over, see, if you look at actual the right-of-way franchise license fees, the 299, then you drop it to 262 for the budget. But then when you carry it over, you drop it to 243. If you're, that's, that's the same utilities up here for OTEC. You come across, you go 440, 439, 440, and you adopt 440, 100%, over 100%. Why are you adopting 100% at 5%? But then when you get to the incremental 2%, you drop it down for less. Looks like that 2, if that 262 number is right, it should carry right straight across and be 262, not 243.
Well, we based the 243 on what we're estimating for the actuals for this year, which is 237.
See, that, that can't be right, Robert. If you go up from that 237, add 440 and 215. And that's at 5% for Vista and OTEC. Am I right? Because it doesn't show here.
Yeah, Vista and OTEC are both at 5.
Okay. If it went up 2%, that would be 40% increase. That should give you that 237, and it's not 237. What did you come up with?
Hang, hang on a minute, Greg. Do you have your franchise projections and your right-of-way projections? I was going to let you talk to them. I was going to let you talk about them.
See, if you add 440 and 215, you get 655. You multiply that times 0.4, you get 262.
I'm going to, I'm going to let our, our new finance director talk to those projections, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
So Greg, I went off of what we've received so far this year.
Okay.
And kind of estimated out what we will finish receiving this year on the right-of-way license fees.
Okay, but you see what I'm saying though? It's a percentage. If, if the franchise fee goes up 40%, you know what you're going to collect at 5.
So you're basically saying, because we are, we are estimating bringing in everything for electric and gas. We should estimate bringing in everything for right-of-way license fees. Is that what you're trying to say?
Right. If you're saying, I'm the, I'm going to, I'm just going to go under the 2021 budget. If you're saying you're going to get 445% for OTEC. And you're going to get 215 from a Vista at 5%. And the right-of-way licensing agreement increased it to 7%, which is 2%, which would be a 40%. 40% of those numbers would be what you would have at your right-of-way license fee income.
So you're thinking we should have estimated the 262?
Right, right. It should be. Let's see. It should be carrying across that 262 should clear, carry clear across to the 243, which you're proposing for you to collect. Because you did the same thing for OTEC at 5%. Why would you, why would you take 100% of 440 above it at 5% and only 243 when it's 262 at the right-of-way license agreement?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. It should be 100% too, because you've done it, you've adopted 100% at 5%.
Well, just as, just as a minor point of clarification, we actually don't adopt the revenue portion of the budget. We only approve and then adopt the expenditure side. We certainly base our expenditures on what our revenue projections are.
Right.
So when we're looking at an estimate for, Heather, are you muted? I was getting a, a bad echo in here, sorry. When we're looking at estimating for this year, only bringing in 237 of our right-of-way license. And nobody, and that does include other providers beyond. And nobody, and, and that does include other providers beyond the ones that, that are listed up there for the franchise. They're fairly small, but. I don't think it would be appropriate for us to budget 262 and we think that this year we're only going to bring in 237. I think with our approach of taking a conservative estimate and saying 243. It gives us a good planning figure. If we end up getting 262, great. If we, if we only get 230 and we budgeted 262. Not as great.
Robert, that doesn't make any sense because you already said you're going to collect 100% of what you've collected OTEC for the last two or three years. You've already got an income stream to look at. And you're, you're saying over here, you're going to get 440,000. Look at OTEC all the way across, it's all the same number. Look at, look at gas, it's all the same number across. Then all of a sudden you get to say the garbage, it jumps up. But then when you get to the right of way, like you changed the name to right away license fee. And now it doesn't make sense. Why isn't it 100% too?
I'd have to look and see the timing of, because I don't remember of when we changed the city garbage franchise agreement. Because when we changed it, they went from 4%, I think it was to 7.
I thought it was 3 to 7, but.
Well, if, that would make, that would, that would drive the right away license figure down even more.
Well, because it, it was, because that, the 3 to 7 makes more sense with the 69,000 to the 143. That you have up there, 2020 actual versus 2021 budget for the garbage service.
Yeah.
And seeing another thing is I, I think you're not paying attention because I was there when you approved the raising of garbage fees. So that 69, 772, I think is a more accurate number of what, what the franchise fee collection is going to be is increased. Because of the, you approved the, to increase the fees that they could charge the citizens. I don't know, last year, whenever that, I was at that same meeting when they were asking for a fee increase, not a franchise fee increase. You implemented, but they were, they were implemented to cover their increased cost of operation. Thank you.
Okay. And we can take a look at those projections and provide you a little bit more detail tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, would you like me to kind of come in here between these different sections just to kind of close one out and introduce the next one? Is that, I forget if that's normal?
Um, I, I can go ahead and do that. It probably would save time. Um, so if there are no more questions on the revenue piece. We'll go ahead and move to the council manager personnel budget. Any questions regarding any of the expenditures that are proposed for these collective budgets?
I do have a, a kind of a general question about process, but if anybody's got a question about a particular line item, I think we can let them go first.
All right, um, this is Steve. Robert, um, I brought this up, I think with you and probably during a council meeting. But the animal rescue and adoption center, mostly known as the Blue Mountain Humane Association. We've been giving them $9,500 for a long time. And when I started digging into this, I, I found out that the money. That we actually moved that money through the county. Um, and the county just uses that to reduce. Uh, the, the county gives the shelter $50,000. Which includes the $9,500 that the city gives to the shelter. So the county has an obligation to fund the shelter to the tune of $50,000. Basically, they, the county gives them 40,500 and our 9,500 brings them up to 50K. Just the, the shelter is, is a real asset to the community. Um, and some recent numbers I got from, from Bev Beach there says that. About 52% of the animals that they take in come from La Grande. And the rest of the, about 20% comes from Baker County. 25% excluding La Grande comes from within the county, from all the communities. And by far the largest intake for the shelter is, is La Grande. And given that we really haven't done much to increase the amount of money that we give to the shelter. Um, I'd like to see us make a sizable increase in the amount that we, we give to the shelter. Based on the amount of animals that come from, from our community and the fact that we really haven't. Changed the amount and inflation has really gobbled up quite a bit. So. I'd like us to consider giving them an additional $5,000. Which would go directly to the shelter rather than funnel through the county. Uh, what I'm, what I would fear is, one of my concerns is that if we don't make that small caveat about any increase. Then the county will just continue their $5,000 donation and the shelter won't see any real increase. And I don't want that to happen. I'm, I want, if we, if we choose to give the shelter additional money. I want that additional, all of that additional money to go to, to the shelter. I will, I'll add in here before I open up for discussion on this that. I made a, a pitch to all of the mayors in the community, uh, into, in the county. That they should, they should be putting something towards, towards the shelter since they all. Every community in, in the county is putting animals over there, but I don't think all of them make any kind of contribution. There's, there's quite a bit of history with the shelter, um, some good and some bad. The last year has been, last year, 15 months has been a really positive for them. There's been a lot of energy put into the shelter, a lot of volunteer time. Um, I really think they deserve some, some additional funding. So I don't know whether I should do, wrap this up in the form of a motion, Robert, or whether we should just open it up for additional conversations.
Um, thanks, Mayor. Couple, couple, couple thoughts. One, it doesn't necessarily have to take place in terms of that now. Uh, one of the letters that I have to read into public comments relates to the shelter. And it would be inappropriate to read that at this juncture. We could certainly have this conversation now, or we could do it when we get into the actual approval. Of the general fund budget. I think this would be a good time to talk about kind of the general feelings regarding that. I would like to touch on a couple of things. I did discuss with the county. The notion of if the city were to increase the contribution, how would that impact? And I do have assurances from the county that they would not reduce any of their contributions. If the city were to provide added funding. So I'm not concerned. Like the county has an obligation to provide $50,000 that they entered into as an agreement. With the understanding that the city was going to be providing the $9,500. So that went into the process of approving that revised agreement. Uh, because I think it was $25,000 that they were providing before that. So the county increased their amount and increased the overall contract to take into account a $9,500 contribution from the city of La Grande. And we provide that funding to the county, which is then passed through to the animal shelter. For the functions that they do. Uh, and it's, and the other thing to keep in mind is it's not your typical humane association sort of a shelter. Uh, there's also an animal control component where they have to take animals that are taken into custody, if you will. By the county, the county is responsible for animal control for the entirety of the county, including within the city limits of La Grande. So, so there's a little bit of a difference to it. The other element, and this is more of a, a process and procedural point, is. The city has in place and used to have it in place, an agreement with Blue Mountain Humane Association. That had certain requirements placed on them as a component of the funding that we provided. And I think that if we want to provide funds directly to Blue Mountain Humane Association. It must be in conjunction with an agreement. And the reason that I say that is. It's very important that if we're giving city funds directly to an organization, particularly on a recurring basis to do something. That we want them to be required to indemnify us. And, and I think perhaps more importantly is we have some specific language that we require. That has to do with notice to the city if there is any abuse or misuse of funds. There was a, a situation a number of years ago where an entity that the city provided funding to. Uh, there was some impropriety that had occurred. And there was a lot of confusion about what the obligations were to notify the city. So we now have, and, and the two organizations that we have ongoing contractual relationships with are the Chamber. And the Grand Main Street downtown. In both of those agreements, we have specific language that requires notification of the city. If there are any allegations of misappropriation of funds and, and that sort of thing. So my strong recommendation would be that. If ultimately the budget committee and the city council opt to increase the contribution. To benefit the shelter, that we continue to, to funnel that through the county. But that we identify in that documentation to the county with that payment. That our intent is that this be an increased amount that's all passed through without a reduction by the county. And I'm certain that they would honor that. And I think that would preserve the integrity of the system whereby. The county has an agreement with the shelter to do certain things. The city would then be providing additional funding through that. And we wouldn't have to go through the additional steps of putting together an agreement to make sure those funds are taken care of appropriately.
And, and that's, yeah, and that's, and that's what I was thinking as well. Um, I don't want us to have to do a whole separate agreement with, with the shelter. If the one that the county has is in place, the one the county has works. What I'm, what I really am adamant about is that any increase that we, uh, we decide on. It goes completely to the shelter and then it not, and that, that $50,000 that comes from the county. Remains at 50,000 and ours is an additional amount. So.
Yeah, and, and I talked to Shelley at the county and, and she understands that and would make sure that that happens.
Okay, and I guess I, you know, if, if we want to, you know, expedite things this evening. Then I would have, I have no problem, you know, bringing this back up at the end as we're talking about. Uh, uh, the final discussion and making a motion at that point, if you think it's a more appropriate placement for, for the motion.
I think if you want to have some additional discussion about whether or not people are in favor of that or not. And then we can just formalize it after we've done the public comments portion into the record tomorrow, that might be more appropriate.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm open, I'll turn it over to Ashley and let him negotiate this piece of it.
Yeah, no, it seems like, you know, there may be enough more, more information to gather tomorrow night that, um, yeah, that would be. Sounds like maybe more appropriate at that point. I've got a few questions, Robert, if you don't mind me quizzing you on a few things.
Sure.
The, um, the TRT, I mean, it makes sense, TRT revenues, you know, were impacted by, as you said, a significant reduction in TRT due to COVID-19. What I'm looking at here in your, in your explanation, the $74,037 to the chamber. Um, and then the additional $16,083. Um, those two numbers, I'm assuming add up to this number down here that we see on the line item of 90, 90,000 and 120. I guess I should stop there. Is that what that number is made out of?
Well, I hope that the 74 and the 16 add to that.
Okay, cool.
It would not, it would not include the 87 for parks.
Okay, right, and so, um, I, I guess then just for this clarification, the 87, almost 88 for parks. We're going to see that here a little bit later, I imagine, where that's been plugged in on the.
You actually, you actually don't, you actually don't see it at all in the parks.
Oh, okay, okay, good. I didn't see it either. I'd already looked.
Um, no.
So, um, now the 16,000, um, that number, I, I, you know, I've been on the budget committee now for a while. I've seen that number kind of go up and down and it gets allocated, you know, a lot of it to the chamber. And there's always sort of a, a certain amount left.
Actually, Ashley, if I could interrupt you, that's 16, that, that does not happen. So this 16,000 is. We did a computation and, um, we actually had an error in that. So this number technically should probably be a lot lower. This was a dollar amount that we had identified as required to be expended on tourism promotion, tourism related facilities. That had not been allocated for city parks or to Blue Mountain Conference or to the Chamber. But has to be used for a TRT related purpose. So this is a separate standoff piece. And the last thing that we spent any of these dollars for that took it down to this 16,000 was the welcome to La Grande sign. That we put a few thousand dollars in a few years ago. So this is, this is undesignedated dollars that is essentially discretionary, but that would have to be used for a TRT eligible purpose.
Sure, right, meaning all the qualifications of how that money is to be spent. Gotcha. And so, um, at this point, I imagine, I, I guess my next question, then I'll kind of move on to some of my, my other couple of questions. Um, of that 16 and 83, uh, you mentioned discretionary, so I guess my. Forgive me if it's a dumb question, I guess who's in charge of that money? Uh, what's going to be a vet, is there going to be a vetting process or a procedure? How can we look for that to actually be spent wisely? Obviously also in addition to the TRT restrictions, rules.
Yeah, I'm not going to spend that money without the council's approval of what it's used on.
Right.
It's really, it's really that simple.
Yeah, that's, that, that makes sense. No, I appreciate that. Okay. Um, then I'll move on to another question here within this subject. Um, the ARP, American Rescue Plan funds, the 2 million, I know they've not been allocated yet. You've explained that, you know, we're kind of waiting for the rules to come down. I wrote this question down. When the rules are established though, will there need to be, um, any sort of second round of budget hearings? With the assumption that some of these expenditure lines will likely be increased by more than 10%. I believe that triggers a requirement for another budget hearing or at least public, public hearing or public comment period. Um, I understand another option, after I brushed up on the rules. Another option would be to actually just have a, a, a separate supplemental budget. Uh, drawn up on how to allocate that particular $2 million and that may or may not require budget committee public. Uh, I think it still requires public hearings, but it doesn't require the committee. So that's part one of a two parter. Uh, I wanted to kind of ask you just procedurally what you were thinking you might, we might do with that.
So the budget compliance question is neither of the two things that you described are required because we're appropriating the dollars here. If, if we had adopted a budget without this $2 million line. And then the ARP had passed and then we had this new revenue line. We would then have to go through a process to, not to receive the dollars, but to spend them. If spending them exceeded our appropriation. So for example, let's suppose that we didn't have the $2 million here. And the ARP would have passed in July and they came out and said, here is 1.2 million dollars. We can take the $750,000 of. We can take the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar of contingency that the City Council uh, is, and the Budget Committee is asking to include in the budget. And we would be able to expend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of contingency for things using that, those dollars. And that's done by resolution.
Right.
By including it in the budget as a separate line, the, if the Budget Committee approves this with this dollar amount in here and the City Council adopts it, when those dollars are received, up to two million dollars, that appropriation line amount can be expended uh, without additional budget authorization required. It's, it's essentially like when we put two million dollars into grants and donations for a grant that we're applying for. And then when we get it, we don't have to reconvene the Budget Committee to approve doing that. So it's essentially a placeholder. And so I would envision that there will be, uh, some level of, of public input and discussion by the council on exactly what to use those dollars for. And, you know, we're not going to get two million dollars this year. We're going to get a segment of it. It's going to be two installments over a year apart totaling an estimated two point seven million. Uh, I plugged in two million dollars, I think, as a, as a good placeholder. And then we have some, some number of years to actually expend those. So it's really, it's really kind of up to the council, what process that they want to go through to make a determination of how to allocate and spend those funds. We're just asking the Budget Committee to approve the ability to spend them after we get them.
Yeah, and that makes, that makes sense. And I appreciate the explanation. And so I suppose what I was sort of picturing was the two million dollars, it's in the budget. We've got it as that placeholder and that kind of allows us to not all have to come back together for another great Zoom call. But, um, yeah, just, I, I suppose that actually leads into my next question. If there is, um, maybe it's just not as well, maybe it's just not thought out yet because this is a little further down the road. Just, you mentioned, you know, there'd be input there. You mentioned that it would be likely a result of some sort of resolution or act by City Council. Um, I suppose then if there's, I guess for lack of a better word, a wish list or, um, if there's going to at least be some emphasis on this two million dollars being spent towards the city, the, the goals and priorities that were outlined, uh, as long as they fit within the restrictions brought about with that money with the recovery fund. Um, is that too far down the road to predict? Or do you kind of have an idea of, of what that'll look like as far as a wish list and that sort of thing?
Muted to clear my throat and then I didn't unmute. We haven't had the conversation with the council because I think it's premature without the rules.
Sure.
You know, the, the, I will, and, and this is not to throw stones, but I know that the, uh, County Commissioners had a conversation about, you know, what might we do with the money? And you saw things from retiring golf course debt to buying golf carts to, you know, there, and, and again, those are all good ideas and probably things that are needed. You know, I, I, I have no doubt in my mind that if we said, what should we use two point seven million dollars? There are a lot of people should say, we should go maintain our streets. I know we cannot do that with the money. So until we know the specific rules about what can they or can't they be, what can you or can't you do with it? I think it's premature to engage the council in any type of a conversation about what should we do? And then I think the first discussion point, when we do know what the rules are, is to ask the council, how do you want to go about determining what we want to do with these funds?
Sure. And actually develop the procedures in that way. Yeah, right.
I, I think it needs to be a very deliberate process. I think that there should be some communications with the county as well, because there's a lot of money coming into Union County. And are there any projects that could potentially be a joint project that would qualify? That might overlap within and, and outside of the, the city limits? Uh, what would make sense? What can we do? One of the, one of the uses of the funds that I know is eligible is replacing lost revenues. So we talked about the fast fact that we had some, some, uh, loss of TRT revenues. So replacing that loss would be a, a potential use of the funds, not a required use. Uh, one that I know we could do as a, from a replacement of funds is to replace the lost gas tax revenues that would normally have gone into our street and road funds that we can put into maintaining our streets. So there are a lot of what could you do with it? But there's also a lot of, I don't know what all the rules are. And until we do, I, I, I think it's premature to have that discussion, but it's, it's the council's prerogative.
Right. No, that, that makes sense. Yeah, I appreciate it. I think that's all I had on this section. Thank you, Robert. Um, I tell you what, too, if, um, we're a little more than halfway through, I mean, if no one else has questions on this section, do we want to take a short five to 10-minute bathroom break, anything like that, before we move on to Finance Municipal Court? Any objections? If there's no objections to that, then how about we just take, um, what do you think? What is it usually? Five, 10? Five? Okay. Sounds good to me. Guys, we'll come back in about five minutes then. Thanks. Five, four, three, two. All right. Uh, we are back from our short break and we're here with the Budget Committee, uh, moving into the Finance and Municipal Court portion of the budget. So we'll entertain any questions from committee members, uh, for the Finance Municipal Court.
It appears there are none.
I concur.
So we'll go to the Police Budget. Questions for the Collective Police Brain Trust? Don't see any raised hands. So we can go to the Fire and EMS Budget. I don't see any raised hands. Parks Department. I see Greg has his hand up.
Yeah, is this, uh, where you're going to buy a new pickup for parks? Is that part of their budget?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. I guess last year I talked about Public Works. They bought that pickup for the street superintendent. He'd driven a Ford Ranger for the last 10 or 15 years. But during then, when they replaced it, they replaced it with a crew cab, full-size Chevy Silverado pickup. And as a city, you've known for the last five years that your expenses are increasing faster than your revenues. But then when I see you go out and buy a full-size pickup when you're reusing a midsize pickup before, that doesn't make any sense to me. Also, you said, well, our experience with the Ford Rangers, that they don't get any better mileage than a full-size pickup. But the Ford Rangers that you're operating now are fifteen to 20 years old and that technology has changed. When you pull up the Ford Ranger new pickups, you can get a Ford Ranger pickup that gets, I think, city mileage, it shows 21 miles to the gallon in town. If you were concerned about your operating expenses, why wouldn't you buy a pickup that gets 21 miles to the gallon versus 15? And why can't you buy, Parks doesn't, I don't know how many miles they put on their pickup a year, but why wouldn't you buy a used pickup, low mileage, three years old, like KIE? I think they, I know at one time they were, have, they would buy new pickups and every three years they would turn them over.
So, hey Greg, this is Stu. A couple of things. The pickup budget is to replace a 98 Dodge three-quarter ton. The reason we need a three-quarter ton is because we, we tow heavy mowers throughout town. Uh, we used to rode those mowers and that destroyed the mowers faster. Mowers are worth about sixty to seventy thousand dollars. It's not worth the investment to do that. We have to tow them around. The other reason is, uh, we don't buy used is because the government contracts are dirt cheap compared to used rates. I shopped these a couple of years ago, used, used rigs came up about two thousand bucks cheaper as all. Doesn't make sense to buy a three-year-old pickup when you can get a brand-new one with all the warranties and what we need to operate safely and efficiently.
Okay. I wasn't asking you to buy a Ranger to do a three-quarter ton job.
I'm just explaining the reason why. I mean, I feel like we do a really good job of being conservative with the general fund dollars. So when somebody questions it, I have, I have it well thought out. I just don't spend money.
Okay, um.
I was going to say, Stu, do you, do you feel like there's an advantage to just having the crew cab, like, full, full-on size? I mean, you can just get more people from one place to another. If a group of people need to get up to Morgan Lake Road or something like that.
No, we don't use crew cabs in this department. The only reason we have an extended cab is to stick the garbage bags in the backseat and supplies for cleaning.
Got it. Thank you.
Just to give you an idea of what's going on in the private sector right now, the utility companies, I talked to one of them the other day. I told him the same example where they bought the crew cab when they were driving a Ford Ranger and he just sort of chuckled about it. He drives a bucket truck right now. The utility companies are looking at not buying bucket trucks anymore. They're going to give these people to put the drop from the line to your house, they're going to have a truck or a van with a ladder because they have to do it the most efficient way and the cost-effective way to operate.
Mary Ann, I see your hands up. Is that on purpose? You're muted.
Yeah, it is. And that was a question that I asked also, Greg, and, and they can really get the three-quarter ton for 28,000. That's a really good price. I mean, that's not a fancy, fancy pickup, I don't believe. Probably a pretty bare-bones one. Is that correct, Stu?
Yeah, in my estimates, the last couple of years, that's, that's been what three-quarter tons have gone on the government contracts. We, we just buy work trucks. So bare bones, um, you have to crank your own windows still. So, uh, that's what, that's, we just need them to tow and to haul equipment and to do our rounds.
Other questions on the, um, Parks budget? Okay, aquatics? Okay, Aquatics? I don't see any hands. Recreation? I don't see any hands. Urban Forestry? Don't see any hands. Library? I don't see any hands. Planning? I do see a hand, Greg?
What come, how come planning is overseeing the Building Department now?
That was a decision that we made to try to link those two departments. At one point, we had Economic Development, Planning, and the Building Department altogether. Then when Charlie Mitchell left, we did a restructuring, reorganization, and pulled Building Inspection back under the City Manager. And then, as we were taking a look at transition with building officials leaving and workload, and also the interconnected piece between the land use permitting and the building inspection function. It made a lot of sense to do that, it also provided some additional supervisory abilities for Mike, and it also reduced some of my span of control to oversee fewer departments. And it just made good sense for us, and so that's why we made the decision to do that a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions on Economic Development Department? And for those watching at home, we had received a couple pages, well, actually several pages worth of questions from Budget Committee members in advance on things that we provided the memo back to them with those questions and answers. So I think a lot of things were answered in advance. So nothing on Economic Development, Building Maintenance? Oh, Mary Ann, yeah. There you go.
I was just curious of why the, there's only one person, it's one FTE, and why their medical and dental and vision is so much higher than everybody else's? Because I was...
Yeah, the medical, dental piece, we went to a tiered rate a number of years ago. To where you have that, and then, you're talking about in the Building Maintenance or are you talking about Building Inspection?
Building and Maintenance. Because there's a $25,000, but if you look back here under, I think it was economic, well, couldn't have been Economic Development, because that's probably in several places. But it was one of the other ones that I saw that their cost isn't as high as that.
So...
Because I...
Yeah, so let me just say this. Particularly when we're talking about single employee departments, I don't want to have a conversation about their benefits because it might be a violation. I can tell you that our employees are covered by health insurance that's on a tiered rate, and depending upon their family size, it influences the amount of the premium. So you can see fluctuations in departments or employees that are part of the same group, even though they're covered separately, because one might be single, one might have a family plus several dependents. But I can tell you that the health insurance rates that you see in here are a projection that we put together based on an assumption for the amount of increase that we'll see. And what we end up spending may be different, dependent upon whether or not an employee changes in terms of family members and that sort of thing, or what the exact premium is. So it's just gonna fluctuate based on their individual circumstance. One answer to your short question.
Yeah, well, I think what I happened to notice was Economic Development, then I realized just now that some of that money is coming from a different department too. Economic, it's coming out of Urban Renewals, so. Yeah.
Okay. Nothing else on Building Maintenance, Building Inspection? Greg?
Yeah, I got a question. We had discussions about you hired the full-time electrical inspector, I know, a couple of years ago. And I had questioned because that was a two-day-a-week job. And I think your answer was, well, we're gonna teach him how to do other things, training, how to do other things. And so I'm looking at the, I'm trying to find it here, but you can probably point it out to me, on full-time employees and part-time employees. So it looks like he's probably assumed a lot more duties than we had before because you had more people working, is that true? Okay. So another part of our discussion was a previous building inspector that had used all the training funds and got his, increased his certifications, et cetera. But the problem was, is he quit the City of LaGrande and went to work for somebody else. And I asked you about, did you have anything that would make him stick around and make sure that the citizens benefited from all this training that they paid for? And you said, well, we'd have to have a clawback clause in his employment contract. And so my question is, this new electrical inspector, do you have a clawback clause? So after we've, the citizens have trained him, paid for him to go to class, so he doesn't just quit the day after getting his certifications to go to some work for somebody else?
No, we did not include those provisions.
Okay.
We did not add a clawback.
So we're gonna make the same mistake again?
Joe, do you want to talk about your staffing?
Okay. So the electrical inspector, which was hired three and a half years ago now, is certified in residential, fully certified in residential, including plumbing, and of course, the commercial electrical and commercial structural. So for that part of the question, yes, he does multiple facets. He actually, right now, completes the majority of our inspections overall.
Okay. But he could quit tomorrow and go to, like I think the last building inspector went to work for the state, and the citizens of LaGrande, after paying for his training, are not gonna benefit from these new certifications that he's got.
Well, Greg, I think where we benefit from that is during the time that they're doing those functions. And I'm concerned about the ability to attract employees, period. Particularly in some of these more difficult-to-place positions, and we've had a lot of challenges in the Building Department. Getting qualified and quality individuals in and keeping them, and a lot of times, we do recognize that we may have to provide training to someone to get them to do a function. But trying to attract someone that already has those certifications, we're not competitive. And the reality of a community of our size, and we see this in law enforcement, I think, a bit as well, where you bring someone in and get them trained up and then you lose them. In law enforcement, at least, if you lose someone to another jurisdiction within the state within a certain timeframe, you may be able to recoup some of those training costs. But, you know, we are seeing the benefit right now of having got this individual trained up and doing that function, and we're hoping that we can keep them. But I can't guarantee that we will, but the hope is that we will.
Right. I just got one more comment. I sort of follow the math with me. One electrical inspector can cover three counties. Because that was done by the private sector a number of years ago. So if electrical inspector costs $100,000, the electrical inspections that you were doing were done on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that would be a 40% cost of that $100,000. Now, I previously, a couple of years ago, I talked to Baker County, I talked to Willow County about this, with some electrical inspector situation was going along with the state, and they weren't gonna allow you to use private contractors, et cetera. Baker County said, oh yeah, we can take him Monday and Wednesday. I talked to the gal up in Willow County, the County Commission, she goes, yeah, we could have used him on Friday too, but we talked to the City of LaGrande and they weren't interested in sharing one. Now, if the citizens of LaGrande could have paid, and, oh, going back to the revenue from electrical inspections, it's $80,000 a year. And it's only gonna cost citizens of LaGrande $40,000 because you're gonna use him two days. And I agree that there's gonna be some office costs involved, but what employee do you have that can generate $40,000 more by that formula?
So the way that we currently use the electrical inspector, we would have to hire another inspector to backfill the time that he would be going, providing services to other counties.
Right. But you were, that was already previously done when you were, doing the private sector anyway, just coming in Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Yes, that was previous to the State Building Codes Division making an emphasis on multi-certified inspectors, which allows for one inspector to go to Elgin and do all the rough inspections on a house instead of sending three different inspectors. So...
So you don't think there would have been any savings then?
Like I said, you'd have to backfill the time that that person was gone somewhere else. And yes, you may be able to backfill with a slightly lower-rate employee. You're still gonna have to fill that time.
Okay. Well, I guess when I see the trajectory of expenses going, continuing to go up, our revenue is flat, but I don't see any ideas about how to contain these expenses or lower them. Do you, I guess maybe I could ask you that question directly. What have you done to lower your operating expenses or contain them so they're not increasing all the time?
So if you look at the ending fund balance on this fund, it continues to go up every year.
Right.
Our fees have not increased since 2010. There was a fee resolution in 2017, however, that was just in order to align some of the fees with the new permitting software that we started using at that time.
Well, but I look at the beginning cash, you got $1.5 million, right?
Yes.
So why do you have a $1.5 million surplus in your budget?
Our budget, we are required to have, at bare minimum, a two-year contingency. So it's, that budget will never be at zero, if it was at zero, the state would come in and take the program away from the City of LaGrande.
You have to have two years?
Two years, yes.
Okay, because that's a big number when you look at things, so. Thank you.
All right, we're done with Building Inspection, they also have a reserve fund. I'm assuming there are no questions on the Building Reserve Fund? Questions on the 911 Fund? Seeing none. Public Works Labor? Okay, Greg?
Yeah. Yeah, what, can you tell us what kind of efforts are being made to control labor costs in Public Works, being how they're the largest? Eighty percent of the City of LaGrande's budget is labor costs?
I think if you look at the projection of what our labor costs are increasing, it's less than 3%. So even when you look at the inflationary cost of living increases, we're really not driving up much cost on our labor. So one of the things you'll see in our labor costs, the changes that are being made, is we're seeing a lot of retirement, so we're bringing in a lot of labor at the lower end of the pay scales. So that's controlling our labor numbers as well.
Okay. I've got something that I'd like to share with you. I live down by the Pepsi plant, where there's a pump station in front of it, they're by the railroad tracks. Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
So I drove by, I drove by there all the time about three years ago. There's two guys in a city pickup going, this is winter time. There's two guys in a city pickup going there to monitor that pump station. One guy opens the gate, the next guy goes in there with the clip cord. He opens up the control panel, he takes, writes down numbers, I don't know what he does. I saw him do that, I don't know how many times. Guess where they go next? They go to Safeway and take a break, and it looks like the one guy hasn't bought breakfast yet. So he goes in and gets a breakfast burrito. The other guy goes back to the meat department and talks to the guy about the wrestling program. Now, this didn't happen once, it happened twice, three times, four times, five times. And I'm going, and then I go down and pay my water bill, sewer bill, and I says, how much has my water sewer bill gone up in the last 10 years? Well, it's gone up 74%. Now, I don't blame those employees, what's going on, because I don't think they've got anything to do in the winter. I blame management, because I think you overstaffed. Because that's what I saw. And this is about eight o'clock in the morning.
I'm interested in where you got your 74% increase in water bill, because we haven't raised rates since 2016.
That was given to me by the Finance Department.
Yeah, we have not changed rates since 2016, there has not been a rate increase.
In the last 10 years, he said, your water and sewer bill has gone up 74%.
And I think in what reference you're looking to is a single rate increase that was adjusted based on our master plan that was redone, I believe, back in 2015. And that adjustment was made because at the time, the water, the water fund was actually seeing a decline in their ending fund balance over the years. So we were actually getting to the point where funding possible new water sources, if we lost a well, we would not be able to do that. So that was a decision that was made eight years ago. Like I said, we haven't raised rates in over five years. We've worked very hard on making sure that our employees are doing what they're supposed to. On rounds, they always have to have the buddy system. If somebody has to pull a pump, if they need to look inside that wet well, you don't want one person standing there looking in that wet well. As for Safeway stops, I can't speak on those, because I don't know that our employees are stopping at Safeway.
Greg, let me just interject. So I think that you're talking about a couple of different things. One, I would ask you that if you observe employees not doing what they're supposed to, please reach out right away so that we can address it then. Because I can't go back and determine, you know, who was in talking wrestling at Safeway two years ago. If we have employees that are supposed to be doing something and they're on their normal scheduled break, that's one thing. But if there's, you know, in there BSing for an hour, that's completely inappropriate, and we need to know that stuff. So if you observe something like that in the future, either reach out directly to Kyle if it's Public Works or to me, so that we can identify what was going on and address that if there's an issue.
But see, Mr. Strop, I asked you about that three years ago too, because when I asked you about the building inspector, it was down at Safeway in the city pickup, it said City of LaGrande on it, at three o'clock in the afternoon. Comes out with a bag, a plastic sack in each hand at three o'clock in the afternoon, and then that same evening, I go to dinner with some people and I go, this is what I saw today. And the guy I'm talking to, he goes, son of a gun, he says, we're all up on the job site, there's four of us waiting for the building inspector to show up, and he's 15 or 20 minutes late. And then I asked you about why the building inspector's pickup doesn't have City of LaGrande on it anymore. I've asked you that twice, and you go, well, that's a good question. It's never been resolved, it doesn't have, say, City of LaGrande on it, the gray Dodge pickup that you paid $43,000 for a diesel pickup for the building inspector to drive around the county. And even after I talked to you about that, I saw him over, down here at the rental place. I go in there and he comes out, looks like he's got a credit card slip in his hand. I go in there and he comes out, looks like he's got a credit card slip in his hand.
Other questions about public work services? Water fund? Water reserve? Motor pool?
I got a question.
Sure.
I've been told the the street department has 10 full-time employees in it. And when you ask about snowplowing, they say, well, we don't have any money to plow snow. And I asked last year about the road graders, you got three road graders in the yard. I think Mr. Carver said, well, we got to have those to plow snow. You get full 10 full-time employees in your budget for the street department. But why have you got this, but then you don't have any money to plow snow? And what are these 10 guys doing in the street department all winter?
So I'll address, sounded like there was about two or three questions in there, so I'll try and cover them all, but let me know if I miss one. The the 10 full-time employees in the street department also cover the front office staff, also, you know, myself, the engineering department, those positions are broken apart between the different departments. So actual staff on the ground for the road department, I believe, is six. The reason that we carry three graders is for plowing snow. And and never do we come forward and say we don't have money to plow snow. I mean, you you can look in the storm utility budget and see that there is an actual allotted amount of money for plowing snow. I think the general consensus of the message that we send out is is that we're trying to be efficient with the money that we have. We know that if we go out and plow one inch of snow or two inches of snow, we're not going to be effective because our plows aren't set to plow snow at those levels. So never at any point have we put out the message, we don't have money to plow snow. We've just said we're being very cautious with the resources that we've been giving to make sure that we do our jobs.
So what are this, what are these six guys doing in the winter time that are on the labor?
They also, they're they're cross-trained, so they also do work in the sewer system. So if we have any manholes that need fixed, they also do sign work where we're updating the reflectivity standards for signs throughout town. They take some time during the winter to rebuild all of the barricades that have been damaged during the construction season. Sweeping, sanding, there's there's quite a few different tasks that we assign during the winter.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I got one question. That $100,000 you spent to on the Beaver Creek watershed, did they study that again last year? Master water plant?
The the only money we've spent up at the Beaver Creek watershed in the last year since we finished the fish ladder has been some lab testing. The state had asked us to do some more intensive testing on the water to make sure whether or not we have some cryptosporidium. If we even saw it show up in the water, because it would change the types of functions that we would need in the water plant if we were to build it. So we spent a year and it ended up being, I think, 13 months of testing to get a full year's worth of data to see if any of that popped up.
Okay, and that was part of the 100,000 that you spent last year, no?
Um, I don't know that we spent any money in the Beaver Creek line items last year.
Well, I got you there, Kyle. What is the problem getting in the the trying to change the flood zone right now?
Oh, we're we're deep in the middle of looking at, and and if you're talking about just updating the firm maps, we've completed a lot of the modeling. The modeling has been submitted to FEMA. FEMA needs to review our modeling to check for errors, to make sure that there's no data gaps, that all of our assumptions that we've made are correct and that that we can back them up. Next will be the step after FEMA has given us the go-ahead, we'll do a public notification process, which I believe is scheduled for later this year. And then we'll start moving toward the completion. Working with FEMA is slow, so.
Did you get the culvert, did you get the culvert in that needed to be done or whatever?
There's one culvert that we need to do over under East H, we haven't done it yet. That's scheduled to be done this year, either in the fall, maybe. COVID kind of threw a loop in all of our field work this year as we couldn't have, we couldn't have most of our crews working all in the same place. We had to keep them somewhat segregated to make sure that we had operators and staff to to run the system throughout the year. So we're playing a little catch-up, but we still got it on the docket.
Okay, I guess why I'm confused, because I was at the meeting when when Anderson and Perry was there. And my understanding was they were waiting for you to put in the culvert so they could submit the application to FEMA.
Nope, they are not. So the the only thing the culvert has to be in before the final maps are approved.
Okay. And I guess another thing, I think everybody needs to know this, there's businesses that are in the flood zone now that are paying $5,000 a year for flood insurance. Then when this map changes, I don't think they'll be in the flood zone. And there's people that are in the not in the flood zone, that are in the flood zone, that need the flood insurance. So it needs to be expedited on both sides of the people that are going to save money and people that don't know that they're in the flood zone and need it.
Yeah, Greg, that it is something that we are pushing forward on. And the county has also agreed to be part of the process. So it is in the works and we're doing it. And to go back to your question about the $100,000 for the consultants, that's in the current year's budget. We spent 20,000 total is what we're estimating and carrying money forward for the consultant if we have to do additional work. So we didn't spend the the $100,000 that you were talking about for the water analysis.
So you budget 100 and you only spent 20?
Correct. And moving moving the dollars in forward. I have a set street and road budget.
Robert, I got a question.
Yeah.
So so you can take this money, this 2.7 million, and use it to replace the money we would have got from the street or from the state, I guess, because of the COVID?
The the information that that we have so far is that you can use it for revenue replacement. If your revenues are down from your last full pre-COVID fiscal year, you can you can identify that as lost revenues related to COVID. You could use some of that allocation to replace those revenues. And so this would potentially be a candidate where there would be some dollars that if people hadn't stopped driving, we would receive from gas tax that we can identify. Because the the allocation that we will get, we have to use all of it for qualifying uses or we have to return it. And so that's the larger discussion that we have to have once we actually get through rules.
So you can you be proactive and go out and try to solicit matching funds at this point in time?
Well, I think that we are constantly looking for ways to leverage funds. Not just in this time, we're always looking for opportunities to use dollars for matching funds. So, yeah, we potentially could.
Okay.
And we're also looking at all of the other pools of money that are being made available state and federal that we can apply funds for. So we're we're constantly looking for grant opportunities and matching opportunities across all of our funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Street reserve, street maintenance. See none, storm utility. Storm utility reserve. Sewer fund. Sewer reserve. Grants and donations. General reserve. And then, as mentioned earlier, the debt fund is paid off and is just still on the books. So that takes us to all of the department review portion of the agenda. And correct agenda. So I think that puts us at a pretty good stopping point. And on my notes, I have a note to take a look at the progression, I'm sorry, the revenue projections that we have included in the budget and the general fund for our franchise fees and right-of-way licensing fees. We'll provide some additional information in detail per Mr. Amor's question of earlier. Were there any other questions on any of the city budget elements in the general fund or the enterprise and other funds? That there are any outstanding questions that anybody has that we need to bring back information for you tomorrow so that we can move forward with budget approvals? Okay, well, what we'll do tomorrow then is we'll have the answer about the the revenue piece. We will do the reading into the record of the comments, do the approval of the general fund, and then move into the enterprise and other funds. So.
Okay, thank you very much, Robert, and thank you, everyone else. If without any other objectives objections or ideas, we can adjourn for the evening and come back at 6:00 PM tomorrow at the same Zoom link.
Sounds great, thanks, everybody, I appreciate it.
Okay, good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.